Madam President, Members of the Board, we're beginning what will be on our agenda for starting tonight for years to come. And this is presentations and demonstrations of instructional technology that our teachers are infusing and integrating in the classroom on a daily basis. Leading up to the 2014 and 15 school year, the Norwood City School District made an over $1.1 million investment in the education of our children in instructional technology in the classroom. Beginning with this school year, all students have daily access to a personal laptop or Google Chromebook in the classroom on a daily basis. Starting with this evening's board meeting, each month, one of our respective buildings will showcase and educate us on the new programs and learning instructional practices being integrated into our classroom. As you will see, not only just tonight, but throughout the year, just how significantly this changes the way we deliver education and significantly changes the way that our students are learning. Tonight, our first and initial, no pressure on you or anything, Martina, but our initial presentation is from Norwood High School and Ms. Martina Stirwalt, who teaches Spanish for us. So, Martina, the floor is yours. Don't be nervous, but it's television. Okay? We're on TV.
Is it our respective screen?
Absolutely. Guys, we can come out.
Should we bring our computers?
Absolutely. We're part of class then.
Great. I'm Spanish.
I did, but I forgot.
All right, as our projector boots up, thank you guys for attending tonight. I do have a presentation about how I use our Google Chromebooks in the classroom. And I forgive me, I walk around everywhere, so if you can't hear me, just tell me to go back to the mic. But today, we are going to do a NearPod presentation, which it may or may not be, it is up there. So, the way that I use NearPod in the classroom is it's an easier way of giving notes to keep the students focused. Our board members here up front have Chromebooks, and they will see what you guys see up on the screen, but I have control over what they see on their screen once they log into NearPod. So, I create a live session of this. And then, if you guys see the code that's up here, I would like you to type that code into where it says "session code." I believe it's at the top right-hand corner of your screen, and it should be all capital letters. Is everybody getting logged in? All right. Yes.
Can I change seats? I need to shrug my pencil.
Ah, you don't need a pencil for this.
I like them sitting next to me. Well, maybe that makes sense.
So, you guys can see, well, you may or may not be able to see, but at the top left-hand corner, there's an arrow, but then there's also the number four. That's how many people are logged into this live session of my NearPod presentation. And then, it tells me when students log out of it as well, and it tells me who is part of that presentation also. So, obviously, I teach Spanish, so it's in the world language classroom, and there are many types of technology that I use, NearPod being one of those. So, here, I have my student list, and I have four people signed in. You can change your nickname in there, the students can, if they want to just put their first name. That's fine, just to see who is in there. And that's just from a teacher's standpoint. And then, once everybody is logged in, then I can continue with my presentation. So, in Spanish class, I think that speaking is one of the most important parts of learning a language, is just to communicate with it. So, with our speaking tasks, that's why we learn another language. And in my class, we do a lot of speaking tasks. For example, we use a website called vocaroo.com. And if you guys with the Chromebooks click on the link that's in front of you, it'll pop up another window, and it'll take you directly to that website. For me, it opens up another link. It's a very, very basic website. It's exactly what it says. You click to record, and then, a student can record up to two minutes of audio with this, and it's based on the tasks that I give them. For example, in my Spanish 2 class, I gave them the task of working with a partner and having a phone conversation. And they could have either gotten a doctor's appointment, inviting a friend to a party, or inviting a friend out to the movies. So, they got to choose, and that's how I use differentiation with that as well. But it's super easy to use. You click to record, you allow it to use your microphone, and then, right now, it's recording my voice. So, I can talk as much as I want, as little as I want. And then, when I click to stop, it says nothing was recorded because my microphone is not working currently. But, once it records, then you can click "Send Email," and it sends an email directly to me once the audio clip is done. So, that's one way that I use Vocaroo. And the other Spanish teacher in the high school, Melissa Rosiello, she also uses this as well. So, if you guys click out of that website, then we can move on to the next slide, which is about grammar and writing. We have a physical textbook that we use. It's Benconmigo. And we also use a supplementary e-textbook as an aid, and it's on our Chromebooks. So, the kids can access it here at school or anywhere that they have access to the internet. Things that we can use our Vocese e-textbook for is to listen to vocabulary. So, they can not only see it, but they can listen to a native speaker pronounce it as well, so that helps with pronunciation. These are all classroom vocabulary things. Then, the next part that we have is videos that can show, such as deforestation in Guatemala. And also, it has videos of grammar lessons, so if they need it explained a different way, they can use that. And then, it has interviews with native speakers as well in the target language of Spanish. So, that's how I use that. And then, it also is a writing aid as well. So, they have pictures, and this one says "Qué te duele?" What hurts? And they have pictures of what hurts, and they have to say "Oh, me duele el brazo." My arm hurts. Or "Me duelen los ojos." My eyes hurt. So, they use that to work on their writing and their grammar. And where can students access their online materials? I personally use Google Classroom. Google Classroom is a newer technology, and I have a classroom page for my Spanish 1 kids and my Spanish 2 kids. And what it is, is I just post which assignments are due for what day. And it's a central location where I don't have to share things out. I just put it on that page, they log into that page, and they can see that. So, an example here is my Spanish 2 page, where I have their Vocese work assigned to them. It has when it's due, how many have not done it yet, and how many have. And it'll tell if it's late or not as well, once the due date has passed. Then, also, on the Google Classroom page, what I can do is, in the About section, I can put links to links that we use a lot, such as the Vocese e-textbook, vocaroo.com, which is the audio recording, and then, also, any videos that I show on YouTube or anything like that. If they want to re-watch it, it's right there for them. But the downside of Google products, you can translate everything with two clicks. And as a Spanish teacher, it breaks my heart. But, it makes it easy for people sometimes, if they're not trying to actively learn the language. I have an example here of an outline that I did, which is partially in Spanish, partially in English. And if you go to Tools and Translate Document, you can translate whole documents. And sometimes, when you get opened up an email, and it's in Spanish or a different language, it gives you the option. It pops up, and it's like, "Would you like to translate this page?" And sometimes, people would like it that way. As a Spanish teacher for my students, I don't want them to. So, it's kind of catch-22 with that. So, unfortunately, we still have to use some paper with our assignments and activities that are outside of our Vocese e-textbook, but we can still use the technology to our advantage. If we, instead of using online translators like Google Translate, which will translate pretty accurately some sentences and thoughts, I use WordReference.com. It's just an online dictionary that you can use with multiple languages. You can translate English to Spanish like it has there. So, if I wanted to know how to say the word, I don't know, "Spanish" in Spanish, I could type that in, and it's English to Spanish, look it up, and it has, on the right side, the translation, "Espanol." So, it's easy to use. It gives multiple options, just like a paper dictionary does, but it's digital. So, if you exit out of that one and go back to the presentation. I have also Spanish Dikt, which is also a Spanish dictionary that's online, does the same thing that WordReference does. I use both of these in my classroom. If the kids don't want to use paper dictionaries, and they're like, "But my Chromebooks out already." All right, so use WordReference.com. But please, 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 don't use Google Translate. And I posed a question. What's the most important thing a student can learn in their world language class to help them? I think it's vocabulary. If you don't know how to say certain words, then you can't really communicate with it. You can't read something and know what it means. So, vocabulary is a very, very large part of our classroom as well. On the Vocese e-textbook, I showed you guys how the, there's the vocabulary list, and you can listen to the vocabulary being said by a native speaker. They can practice with it in a written form. And then, I also use Quizlet.com, which is a digital flashcard website. So, I can make digital flashcards for my class, or there's existing ones already as well. And the kids can use that to help study for tests and exams, or to just study some vocabulary before the test or exam. And then, grammar's never fun to teach. It's a pretty dry subject. But using a NearPod presentation like this, all the board members in the front, they have seen it in action, and I'm in control of what they see in their presentation. When I change a slide, it changes on their screen. And so, when I, I can also see when people exit as well, so that can be like, "Uh-oh, Mr. Modio, you're not on NearPod anymore. We need to make sure you're on NearPod again, so please log back in." And then, here is just the link that you guys saw on the NearPod page, but this is the front page of it. And I believe that is about it. Oh, nope, there's one more. Conjugamos.com is also a website that we use, and it works with conjugation in Spanish. So, you can use all sorts of different tenses, if it's the present tense, if it's the past tense, if it's past participles, and you can do it in multiple languages that you see on the left as well. Now, that's the end of it. So, do you guys have any questions about anything?
Martina, how long did it take you to be trained on Chromebook and to learn what you just showed us there?
With the NearPod, I actually learned that at one of our Google trainings at the beginning of the school year. And so, it didn't take me very long to learn it, to use it. It works very similarly to PowerPoint, so if you're very well-versed in Microsoft programs, it's pretty easy to use. And then, I've been using some of those websites before we got the Chromebooks too, when we had our computer labs, and so, that was just taught from that.
How about the students? How long did it take to assimilate them to become used paper pencil readers?
Yeah. The students, it's a work in progress still, just because with all of our new programs that we're using, there's a lot of usernames and passwords that we have to remember, and so, they have to kind of keep a log of those. But, other than that, they, they're always on their phones, and so, it's kind of an easier transition in that regard.
How often are you engaging in Chromebooks?
Two to three times a week.
Is this a little bit easier to integrate than the old computer hardware capability yet?
Yes, definitely, because most teachers have their own Chromebook set. And so, I have 25 Chromebooks in my classroom, and it's easy to say, "All right, guys, we're gonna use Chromebooks for the last 15 minutes of class. Go ahead. You know your number of your Chromebook. Pull it out, log in really quick, and go on to X website to do X activity." And they know exactly what to do, how to do it, how to put the Chromebooks back the right way. So, it's awesome.
You said you could tell when someone logs out, but they open another tab in here. Can you tell that?
I cannot, no.
That's why when I open another tab, it's to see if you sent me a dictum.
Yeah. I can't do that, but I can see if they're logged into this or not.
Picking on me?
Yeah.
As being off-task?
Are they sharing homework with you yet? I see that's on the screen now. Are they submitting homework to you through Chromebooks yet? They are to appoint with our Google Drive. Recently, with my Spanish 1 kids, they did a culture project, just researching a Spanish-speaking country, and they shared that project with me, so it comes into my incoming on my Google Drive, and it's very simple. So, just type in my email, they have to spell my last name correctly, and then, it's all good to go.
Any other questions, sir? Outstanding. Martina, thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's set up for that to happen. Absolutely. That's our intention, as soon as possible. We're still working out some kinks and bugs. Day they're printed. Absolutely. That is our intention. We're in that process. We just want to make sure everything's working real well. Seems we had that discussion earlier today, didn't we? We've been, that's our, that is what we're gonna do. Next part of the agenda is speaking for myself in the school board is really our favorite part of every month, and that is a recognition of our rising stars. Each month, we have two students from each building and a staff member for each built from each building that is recognized as a rising star. Students or staff members are recognized as a rising star for their attitude, their effort, their work, and just their representation of what we strive to have, not only our staff, students, but the entire district stand for. In a moment, when I call your name, come up to the front, you'll receive a certificate from Mr. Acey, and then, come down, we'll just make a line on the blue carpet right in front of the stage. And once we have everybody up here, we'll take some pictures, and then, once we're done with all the rising stars, we'll break from the board meeting for a couple minutes, and everybody will follow Ms. Havlin out to the lobby for a few more pictures. The pictures in the write-ups, the write-ups, what I will say as what has been submitted for the reason why you're a rising star, as well as the pictures, will be on our district website, our building websites, and then, the students who are recognized tonight will be in the next edition, that'd be the October, or the November edition of the Norwood Star. So, with that, we'll begin with our Norwood High School Rising Star students for the month of October. There are Saca Dobbs and Bailey Bomonte. Saca Dobbs is an extremely motivated student-learner. She explores new concepts that are introduced and diligently works to fully understand the complexities of the presented material on electronic devices. She is a pleasure to have in class because of her genuine character. She's able to relate to all students that she works with in a group. She's accepting of all people and provides a warming personality. She has graciously accepted her role of assisting a new Arabic student with reinforcing directions and providing translation. Her help is greatly appreciated and certainly does not go unnoticed. Congratulations. Outstanding. Guys, if you could step down, one step onto the carpet. We don't want anybody to fall off the stage. Bailey Bomonte goes above and beyond in everything she does. She is such a hard worker, extremely respectful and kind to everyone she comes in contact with. She strives to always do her best and is intrinsically motivated to achieve even higher. Bailey is a positive student and is an absolute joy to be around. Also, she is a talented singer in our choir, and has made such a great transition to the high school. She is a bright personality with a smile that can light up a room. Bailey is a confident student and a great influence on her peers in class. We look forward to seeing her achievements over the next four years. Congratulations. Norwood Middle School Rising Star students for the month of October are Sidney Ryan and Olivia Jesse. Norwood Middle School is proud to announce Sidney Ryan as a Rising Star student for the month of October. As a seventh grader at the middle school, Sidney makes it her personal goal to demonstrate all of the school's pride and peace builder characteristics in the way she treats others. And Sidney is known as a kind, helpful student. Sidney mentioned that she likes coming to school every day with a positive attitude, asking questions in class, and staying focused on her work. Along with that, she said her secret to classroom success is completing her homework first thing when she gets home. What a great example. Sidney's teachers rave about her exemplary work in and out of the classroom as she continues to go above and beyond the expected standard. Her science teacher, Ms. Gerald, applauded Sidney for exemplary efforts on a very difficult test. Mr. Lukin, her advisory teacher, continued praising Sidney and said she is very helpful and a great example for other students. In addition to academics, Sidney absolutely loves participating in volleyball and basketball after school. Known as the ace of the volleyball team, Sidney's athletic ability has helped the volleyball team find success this season, and she looks to continue that trend once basketball picks up in a few weeks. In the immediate future, Sidney wants to continue to do well in school and get straight A's for the remainder of her middle school career. Ultimately, she wants to do her part in the community and develop into a college-ready young adult. Someday, she'd like to go to Xavier University, play basketball for the women's team, and major in special education. Norwood Middle School is expecting amazing things from Sidney Ryan in the future. Students like Sidney are what make Norwood School Middle School great. Olivia Jesse is Norwood Middle School's eighth-grade Rising Star student for the month of October. Olivia is an extremely hard-working student. She is concerned about her grades and puts a great deal of effort into her work. Olivia has a happy-to-be-alive attitude that is simply infectious. She is always smiling and has a kind heart. Olivia's made some positive changes in her life over the last year. In seventh grade, she noticed she wasn't going down the right path and decided she needed to make some adjustments if she wanted to be successful. She stopped hanging out with people that were dragging her down and started volunteering around school to simply help others. This year, Olivia has gotten involved with Team Empowerment, which is a unique leadership program for students who want to make a great difference in their school and community. Team Empowerment gives young people a place and an opportunity to think about issues in Norwood, and gives them the tools, inspiration, and ability to work with others in their school and community to start making important and positive changes. Olivia is focused on helping students work through and prevent bullying inside and outside of school. Right now, Olivia's number-one goal is to get grades in her classes. Outside of school, Olivia loves singing, crafting, and playing softball. She wants to attend college to study music. Norwood Middle School is very proud of Olivia's positive attitude and diligence. Congratulations, Olivia. Sharpsburg Elementary and Primary School Rising Star students for the month of October are Jace Bishop and Will Jones. From Sharpsburg Primary, second grade is thoroughly impressed with one of our super friends, Jace Bishop. From day one, he has continued to remain a role model for his friends. He comes to school prepared, ready to learn, gives eye contact to his teachers and his friends while they talk, is respectful, hard-working, and an eager learner. He loves to share his ideas with the class, participates often, is willing to take risks. We just adore Jace and can't wait to see how much he will learn the rest of this year. What a go-get-'em attitude he has. Thanks for being super, Jace. Sharpsburg Elementary staff just had to start their Rising Star candidates this year with an amazing young man. Will Jones has proven early in sixth grade that he's a true leadership material. He's an all-around fantastic student. He is kind to all, extremely intelligent, witty, hard-working, polite. The list could go on and on. Will truly leads by example. This past week, Will was elected president of the Sharpsburg Elementary Student Council. It's a true pleasure and honor to have Will as part of our school body. On a side note, must be mentioned that Will achieved a perfect score on the fifth-grade science achievement test. As a result of this, Mr. Marshall Dykes, his fifth-grade science teacher, was forced to wear a dress, a wig, and heels to school for one entire day as a result of Will's accomplishment. Thanks to Will, this is something that many will never, ever forget. Congratulations to both of you, gentlemen. Norwood View Elementary School Rising Star students for the month of October are Ramir Brown and Maria Iglesias Velasco. Ramir is a third-grade student in Norwood View Elementary. She's been nominated as the October Rising Star. Ramir is a star student every day. She attends school on time daily. She is prepared with all of her completed homework assignments each day. She is a leader in class as well as outside of the classroom. She is a peace builder because she seeks wise people when needed. Ramir is always helping. She helps the teacher as well as the students in the room. She doesn't hesitate to jump in and help out whenever she can. We're very proud of her heart. She works every day in the leader that she is quickly becoming. Norwood View is extremely proud of its second Rising Star of the Month, sixth-grader Maria Iglesias Velasco. Maria's goal is to get straight A's in school. She is responsible and focused in the classroom, takes pride in doing her best. Her favorite subject is math because she says it comes easy to her. Maria also enjoys gym class and is very, very athletic. She is well-liked by her peers because she is respectful and caring. Maria smiles a lot. Outside of school, Maria enjoys playing soccer and basketball. She also enjoys spending time with her family. Maria has three nieces and three nephews who she helps with schoolwork every day. She especially enjoys playing with the babies. Maria plans on going to college to play soccer or basketball and earn a college degree, and then, she would like to play basketball or soccer professionally. Congratulations, Maria. Williams Avenue Elementary School Rising Star students for the month of October are Corey Hill and Cameron Hundeman. The fifth-grade staff at Williams Avenue Elementary would like to nominate Corey Hill as its Rising Star. Corey is an exemplary student and young man. As a student, he excels in the classroom on a daily basis. He consistently is on task, focused, and motivated. In addition to being a fantastic student, Corey is a responsible and respectful young man. He displays champ behavior at Williams Avenue every day. He is a role model to his classmates and younger students during the school day. We see a very bright future for this young man. Keep up all your hard work and dedication. Cameron Hundeman is a sixth-grade Rising Star for the month for Williams Avenue Elementary. Cameron is a hard-working student who is also cheerful, positive, and outgoing. His attitude is contagious, and he can brighten anyone's day with a funny comment and laugh. He works very hard to meet his goals and always tries his best in the classroom. He is helpful to others around him, including students, staff members, and even substitute teachers. We count on Cameron to be a champ student who always works to the best of his ability. Cameron is a terrific peace builder, and we know that he truly embodies the peace builder characteristics. He gives his best effort no matter the situation, and his dedication is impressive. He takes responsibility for his own actions and schoolwork, ensuring that he does the best that he can. We're proud to have Cameron as a Rising Star for October. We know that he will continue to rise to the challenge as he continues through Norwood City Schools. Congratulations.
Okay? Okay, we ready? One, two.
The next group we'll recognize are our Rising Star staff members for the month of October. From time to time, we will get an individual or a group of individuals that efforts and work ethic goes above and beyond of what is expected from employees. As you saw through Ms. Stirwalt's presentation tonight on our Chromebooks, we just didn't buy Chromebooks, stick them in the teachers' classrooms, and say, "Have at it." It took a significant amount of work by the group that I'm getting ready to introduce and recognize. These guys, pretty much all June, July, August, worked 12, 14, 16-hour days, many times seven days a week, spent time away from their families. As you may know, if you As you may know, if you walk into any building other than this one in the summer, especially as you go up floors, it's not real pleasant, since we don't have air conditioning other than the high school, but the group of individuals who I'm about to recognize did all of this with one goal in mind, is that when our staff came in two days before the school year started, and when our kids showed up in the first day, that the transition from desktop, hardwired computers to everything that you saw tonight, keeping in mind that every student and staff member in the district is either using a personal laptop or one of the Google Chromebooks, these guys made it happen. And they have not gotten enough recognition from myself or so many others, other than walking by and going, "Well, hey, you haven't gone home yet?" Or, "Did you go home yet?" Because it's eight in the morning and I don't think you've been gone, things of that nature. So, it's a long overdue recognition to a group of individuals tonight. Norwood High School, Norwood Middle School, Sharpsburg Elementary, Norwood View Elementary, Williams Avenue Elementary, the entire district Rising Staff Stars for the month of October are Randall Grandstaff, Travis Caldwell, Sean Tuke, and Karen Elliott. Over the summer, countless hours were spent updating all of our buildings with the latest technology. This included, but was not limited to, removal of old and outdated computers, laptops, and all hardware associated with the computers, then installing new laptops, laptop carts, Chromebooks, and updated technology. This could not have been accomplished without Randall Grandstaff's planning and direction in the combined efforts of Randall, Travis, Sean, and Karen, who all worked to make sure we received the most for our funding and scheduled the installation for each building so it would be completed prior to the beginning of the school year. Randall's dedication to our school district is remarkable and very much appreciated. Whether it be as simple as, "I can't open my email," which Randall hears from me a lot, to, "The server's down, our IT department is always answering the calls, finding the solution." So much of their work supports everyone else being able to do good work. When the team fixes a challenge or helps someone understand how to use a program, they have changed the learning for the better for the group of students who walk into that classroom for the day. When we asked our staff members about our IT department, here's what we were told, "An amazing and talented department. It's people like this that represent what it means to care about your work." They are very knowledgeable about, of their craft. They always have a solution to our needs and are prompt with the response. They are team players, doing whatever needs to be done to assure that our staff and students have the highest quality of technology at their fingertips. Our school district is very lucky to have an IT department that is always willing to go above and beyond to help us out. Our IT department headed by Randall Grandstaff is courteous, prompt, and above all, dedicated to the students of Norwood City Schools. And finally, they are such hard workers and very helpful in whatever task is needed. And while all this work was going on in the summer, what many people don't realize is schools just don't shut down for three months. Their employees will work all year, and many of our staff are in almost every day all summer. So while these four were working like crazy for the start of the school day, you had many others, such as myself, having a crisis at three o'clock on a Monday afternoon that they had to drop what they were doing to come over and put a new battery in my mouse or something like that. Or, you're running, trying to schedule all of your students and you have to change something, and that program doesn't work, or a printer doesn't work, or power goes out, and when you're in a digital society like we are now, power goes out, you kind of come to a screech and halt. And these guys make it okay for everybody, and things are seamless. If you didn't know, if you were not around here all summer, you walked out here the last day of school and walked in here the first day, you wouldn't realize the work that they did. And that is the testament to how they do their jobs. They weren't frazzled on the first day, or they didn't show it, on the first day of school, and everything was up and ready to go. And I always tell these guys, when no one knows what you do, then that's when you're really doing a good job because things are working. So on behalf of the school district and for me personally and professionally, this is one great team we have here that doesn't get enough pats in the back, and we all appreciate what you guys do. Thank you very much. Hey Randall, I'm having a problem with my phone. I got mine out. Let's make a break for the management team. Everybody who's here, the Rising Stars, and everybody who's here with them, please follow our executive assistant, Ms. Havlin, out the lobby, but we've got a lot more photos to take.
I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the following student trips. Avenues for Success to the Purple People Bridge, Avenues for Success to the Newport Aquarium, Sharpsburg Elementary fifth grade students to the Wilds, and Norwood View Elementary sixth grade students to the Wilds. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Faulkner. Please call the roll.
Scott Dracy.
Yes.
Faulkner.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Horsley.
Yes.
Item seven, Personnel Superintendent Recommendations.
Madam President, members of the board, I have a number of items for your consideration this evening under Personnel, beginning with letter A. Resignation, one individual. Letter B, Employment, number one, Classified Substitutes, 2014-15 school year, two individuals. Number two, Resolution to Hire Non-Certified Coaches/Advisors, 2014-15 school year. Number three, Supplemental Contracts, 2014-15 school year, seventeen mentors, two career ed coordinators, sixteen under Athletics, ten under Avenues for Success. Number five, Educational Ages and Student Assistant Ages, 2014-15 school year, one individual. And number six, Cafeteria, one individual. That concludes my items of recommendation under Personnel this evening.
May I have a motion for approval of the items?
Second.
Mr. Faulkner, may I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bryant.
Faulkner.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Horsley.
Yes.
Scott Dracy.
Yes.
Policy Committee Report, Mr. Faulkner.
Thank you, Madam President. By recommendation of committee, I'd like to make a motion for approval of item 8A, approval of following new policy and revisions, revenues and investments filed DFA.
A motion for approval of the policies. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Horsley.
Faulkner.
Yes.
Horsley.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Scott Dracy.
Yes.
Next item, Building and Grounds Committee, Mr. Bryant.
Yes, Madam President, with the board's approval, I'd like to make a motion for the following items, A and B for approval of transportation, and C, approval of use of facilities, one and two.
I have a motion for approval. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Horsley.
Bryant.
Yes.
Horsley.
Yes.
Faulkner.
Yes.
Scott Dracy.
Yes.
Next item is the Finance Committee Report. I would like to make a motion for approval of the five-year forecast and the approval of the financial reports for September 2014. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bryant.
Scott Dracy.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Horsley.
Yes.
Faulkner.
Yes.
Next item is Hearing of the Public. We have no requests. Board Announcements. Board Announcements, we have the 5K coming up.
Saturday morning.
Saturday morning.
I'd like to congratulate the eighth grade football team for their perfect season.
All right. The next item is the Superintendent's Report.
Yes, several months ago, the Norwood City School District was fortunate enough to be selected by the High Board of Regents as one of four school districts out of 614 in the state of Ohio to be included in the state's Gear Up Grant application. The Gear Up Grant is a federally funded grant program directed by the United States Department of Education. Last week, the High Board of Regents was notified by the United States Department of Education that they had been selected as one of the grant recipients, which includes Norwood. With awarding of this grant, our district will receive significant financial resources in areas of student academic mentoring and tutoring, post-secondary preparation, and college tuition scholarships for our students. The focus of this federal grant is to prepare and provide post-secondary opportunities for first-generation college students and/or economically disadvantaged students. In short, as part of this grant, our students, grade seven through 12, will begin to engage in academic mentoring and post-secondary opportunity preparation activities during the current school year, beginning with the 2015-2016 school year. The student post-secondary scholarship program will be in place, which is what is considered to be scholarship or tuition funding of last resort, which means that once students who qualify for this scholarship program, which could either be students identified under our free reduced lunch program, or they are a first-generation college student, that their tuition will be funded. After they've received all of their federal aid, need-based aid, academic aid, the remaining dollars of tuition will be funded by this grant, and our kids will have, these kids will have the opportunity to attend a college, in the college/university, two or four year in the state of Ohio, private or public, at no cost tuition. And that is available for our students and three other school districts in the entire state. The duration of this grant is for seven years. As we finalize the specifics of the grant, inclusive of the implementation timelines and scholarship levels, we'll share that with everybody. We anticipate we'll get all the final details at a meeting that a number of us have to attend in Columbus on November 5th. We anticipate we'll come home from there with our exact dollar amounts in the process of the scholarship tuition. But this is simply an amazing opportunity for our children, our school district, and our entire community. The program will have mentors and advisors, counselors, that will follow our students from seventh grade, ninth grade, whatever grade that they are in as of this year, all the way through college graduation. That is just as big as the funding of this, of college education, college tuition for our kids. This is an opportunity that can truly, truly not just change a child's life, but change a family's life, and it's going to be really neat to not only see our kids' lives change, our families' lives change, but our community change, because the amount of just not college attendees, but college graduates are going to grow exponentially, starting with next year's graduation class. We have a seven-year timeframe to watch our community change, our families change, and you know, when you get into this profession, what we want to do is provide hope. That's what we want to do. We want to provide hope for kids, that they can achieve what they want to achieve, they can be what they want to be, they can strive for. And this is now, we can look our kids in the eye and say, "What do you want to be? What would you like to go to college for? What would you like to major in? What would you like to achieve in your life? And we're going to help you get there financially, and we're going to help you traverse the whole college world, the whole university world." And this is amazing, for Norwood City Schools to be part of this and to be one of the four districts out of 614, that's a blessing to our district and our community, and it's going to be neat, look back seven years from now and see all the successes that our kids are, because we gave them the means and the support to reach that success. This is just tremendous for our kids, and just yet another great asset about the city of Norwood and our school district. And finally, congratulations to our boys soccer team, league champs, tremendous, tremendous year, very, very entertaining team to watch, and good luck as they move into the postseason. That concludes my Superintendent's Report for this evening.
Next item is the Braden's Report, Mrs. Horsley.
Thank you, Madam President. Last week, we met out at the Live Oaks Campus, which is out in Milford, and we were able to take a tour of some of the upgrades they had done to that building over the summer, as well as walk through enrollment projections for not just that campus, but all of their campuses. They also talked to us, and I know, Mr. Medio, they'll be reaching out to you, but there is a bill in place that is going to make a requirement that technical education be offered to grades seven through 12. So in February, we will have to make a resolution to decline or accept that bill that will be passed. So they're going to be reaching out to us with information coming through you. So they walked through some of those details for us, as well as just getting to enjoy a different scenery as they're making adjustments to the Sharonville campus. They're completely redoing that office where we typically meet. That was the meeting from last week. That concludes my report.
Thank you. The Legislative Report, Mr. Miracle is absent tonight, so we will move on. I would like to make a motion for approval of meeting notifications. All meetings listed below are to be held in the Board of Education Meeting Room unless noted at 2132 Williams Avenue. Committee meeting, Monday, November 10, 2014, 5:30, and the regular Board of Education meeting, Thursday, November 20, at 6:00 PM, will be held in the Norwood High School Mini Auditorium. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Horsley.
Scott Dracy.
Yes.
Horsley.
Yes.
Faulkner.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
That concludes our items. We now need a motion to go into Executive Session in accordance with ORC 121.22G1. May I have a motion to go into Executive Session?
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Bryant. Second by Mr. Faulkner. We are going into Executive Session at 6:50?
Yes. Bryant.
Yes.
Faulkner.
Yes.
Horsley.
Yes.
Scott Dracy.
Yes.